Good evening and welcome to the June 12, 2017 meeting of the Florissant City Council. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Pagano.
Here.
Carson.
Here.
Sayam. Lee.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Yep.
Shuldrough.
Here.
Hanky.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections, additions to the meeting minutes and executive meeting minutes of the May 22, 2017 meeting? Hearing non-councilman Lee moves to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Egan. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The meeting minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is election of officers. Mr. Lee?
I would nominate Jackie Pagano to stay on as council president.
Thank you. Mr. Lee moves to nominate Councilwoman Pagano to serve as president of the city council for a one-year term, seconded by Mr. Childress. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. I thank you all very much for having the confidence in me for one more year.
Can I be talking?
Your mic's not on, sorry. I would like to nominate Councilman Caputa to serve as my vice president again for a one-year term, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, yeah.
The next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council on any issue, not necessarily on the agenda this evening. This is not a question-and-answer period, but we would be happy to stay after the meeting and talk with any of you on the issues that you have in hand. So I will start with Paul Higdon. Good evening, and you're gonna have to state your name and address, and you may have to pull that mic way closer, take it off.
Raise this about one foot.
There you go, much easier.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of the council. Hello, Tommy, nice to see you. I reside at 2320 North Waterford Drive, of a residence of which I've owned for 13 years. I've gone from when I first moved here to Florissant meets my needs, to wow, this is a pretty amazing community. Everything from that Nino the Clown at the Egan Center grounds in May, the fireworks, the great restaurants, the Egan Center itself, even the chili cook-off down the street here in October is unbelievable. I really love living here. That being said, I and many other residents on Waterford, and what I understand also Parker, experienced our second sewer water backup in 16 months. This obviously was precipitated, no pun intended, by nine to 10 inches of rain in both occasions. However, it has shaken my faith a little bit in just the whole situation, city, sewer, it all. And I don't even have a finished basement. My neighbors on both sides of me had ruined finished basements, in some cases twice of them, so I'd like to advocate on their behalf. However, even without a finished basement, you might imagine the extreme headache in cleaning up sewer water, especially the second time you begin to... Things creep into your mind like, oh my gosh, this is gonna happen every time, so that is why I'm addressing you. I certainly understand that it is imperative that the city of Florissant maintains cordial, if not friendly, relations with the sewer district, and I know there are projects going on this town all the time. However, I am convinced, as are my neighbors, that the sewer district, as opposed to repairing the situation, would probably be content with just writing $2,900 checks. It's not actually the sewer district, but their insurance company that does this, and we're grateful for that, but we're not... We believe they would be content with that rather than a major sewer project to really fix the problem. We hope, however, this isn't the case, and so I, on behalf of my neighbors, we appeal to you, the council, to do what you can, to apply firm and persistent pressure for the sewer district to really solve this issue. Although we'd like to see everything taken care of in a month, we know this is not going to happen. It won't even probably take care in a year, but we hope that the wheels can get in motion, so I appeal to you. It is... We believe it's only through the help of your influence that this can get done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mayor?
There may be other people here to comment that are very interested about... Interested in the game plan with MSD. Major announcement will be forthcoming this week from Brian Holsher, the executive director of MSD. We talked last week. We're trying to iron out the details, but it's gonna encounter... It's gonna entail some extraordinary steps that they've never done before. Not saying it's gonna be 100% reliable to fix every problem, but it's... They're gonna be doing a lot more than they've ever done before, including some pumps and some other measures, so they'll be making an announcement mid-week.
Thank you.
Just one other issue on that same comment. One of the things that Mr. Holsher will be announcing this week is the scheduling of three separate meetings for three separate zones that were most affected by the recent storms. Thanks.
I'm sorry. Ms. Engelmeier?
Good evening, John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road. I'm here tonight because I sent an email on June 1, addressing the city council agenda, and the topic to be discussed would be the city Weber building and the procedure, the process of the renovation of that building, also trying to define the word transparency and the procedure to request for an item to be put on the agenda. Also, that we've had seven executive sessions since April 10 by the city council concerning legal matters. I'm a little bit concerned as a citizen, what litigation that we're involved with and what the city council and the administration has put us into concerning legal issues. Follow-up by that, when transparency is absent, there's a lack of trust about the non-information presented. This can be seen as either positive or negative, because it can be negative, because it can lead to corruption, and in extreme cases, a lack of leadership. The email I sent went to Ms. Pagano as president of the city council, and as well as I copied Karen Goodwood in Little Gerald's about the Weber building and the cost. I did not hear anything regarding my email, so I addressed the city council, this might be reviewed as a confrontational position rather than a better understanding, for instance, the renovation of the Weber building for the new court building. Several months ago, I presented a summary of the court finds over a five-year period indicating the reduction of court finds, more than likely due to the decrease in citations due to the application of Senate Bill 5. In either case, according to the most recent monthly operating report, five months into the current fiscal year, we're presenting 32.13% of the budget approved by the city council, the amount being $449,781.96, actual, out of the $1.4 million projected revenue. The cost justification for this project, I'm talking about the Weber building, is going to be, in my opinion, an additional neglect by the administration to apply cost-benefit evaluations, and I therefore did request that this discussion by the president of the city council concerning the Weber building and renovation, and yet I was not even given the courtesy of any acknowledgement to my request, thus the reason for clarification of the words transparency. I believe, like many homeowners', attitude is dump and run. As the city administration, the city council will be out of office, leaving a debt, terrific burden of maintenance, of costs of parks, buildings, and equipment, and for I, a taxpayer on a fixed income, to pay for the lack of due diligence and fiduciary responsibility over the future finances of this city. The most recent audit of the city, recently posted on the city website, was dated March 13, and I take the words from the audit. Municipal court revenues are also down significantly.
Thank you, Mr. Engelmeier.
Because it reflects...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And we will be discussing the court building on Monday evening at the work session.
But that's not public.
The work sessions are all public. Thank you.
They're not publicly broadcasted.
Don Albert.
I have citizens here who'd like to probably hear it.
Good evening.
Evening. I'm Don Albert, and I live at 1240 Swan Drive, Florissant. I have some issues with renters and the property owners or landlords. I'm hoping that I can get Florissant to dedicate a little more time to these problems. I got a few pictures.
Okay, if you have pictures, sir, can you press that projector right there?
It's on.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
Which is that address, Jim?
1240 Swan.
Swan.
There it goes.
I don't know.
Upside down.
Tim Lee.
There you go.
This car has now been removed, but it sat across the street from me in 1245 for at least two to three weeks, and with both flat tires, back tires were flat, and nobody did nothing about it. Last Friday, when I came home, it had been removed. But the question is, is that this person has... Does get the lawn mowed, but does Florissant have any jurisdiction over the backyards and the shrubs? Are they supposed to be also taken care of?
Yes, sir.
Well, I show that because this car was removed, but the person has not done anything in two years to the shrubbery. This is just trying to show the weeds have grown up about as high as that fence. In the two years that she's been there, she has done absolutely nothing to the shrubbery or the weeds or the trees that's grown up between them. I don't know if the city... How do you get jurisdiction to go in there and try to get something done? I don't know. What I would like is something to be done.
What's the address of that?
1240 Swan.
1245.
1245. Oh, 1245, I apologize. I got that now. I'll just write it off for us.
This is the next door to me at 1250, and this carport has been in the process of falling down for at least two years. You can see that there are shingles broke on the side of the house there, the carport panels have fallen down, they're laying on the grass, and I talked to him about fixing it and talking to the landlord, and he said he gave his money to the female that lives there. She said, "I don't want anybody coming around my house, so I'm not doing anything," you know? I don't know about this woman.
All right, sir. Sir, thank you. The three minutes is up. I'm just gonna answer this because this is like, dear, truly, we're gonna get...
This is a backyard.
We're gonna get an inspector over there this week to take a look at the property and to write up any violations on it. I appreciate you coming and telling us, especially about the backyards, and I'll explain this to the public. These aren't inspectors, when we do our drive-bys, we look at the front yards, you know, we do a slow drive-by, we can't see in the backyard. So we truly rely on you to contact a council member or anyone just to show us, then we can go, and then we can go in the back and look at it.
Thank you.
And address it, so I really appreciate that. And the mayor has assured me we will have an inspector out there this week. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Joy Rose.
Rouse.
Rouse, I'm sorry.
Whereas Joy Rouse has been an employee of the Ferguson Florissant School District for 32 years, and whereas Joy has been the district early education director for 20 years from August 1997 to June 2017. The department consists of preschool, early childhood special education, award-winning parents as teachers, diagnostics, Head Start, Link, and award-winning child development centers. Whereas Joy has been the... Was the first program to integrate home visiting into preschool program and child development centers, and whereas Joy is the deputy director of Parents as Teachers National Center and was the parent as teacher's national trainer. Whereas Joy received the Early Childhood and Parent Educator Distinguished Service Award for Outstanding Leadership and Commitment to Improving Quality of Life for Young Children and Their Families from the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education, 28th Conference on Young Years in 2001. Whereas Joy was honored with the National Center for Parents as Teachers Born to Learn National Trainer Certificate Recognition in 2009. Whereas Joy was given the Dean's Award for Outstanding Service to Children, 2009, 2010, from the University of Missouri-St. Louis, St. Louis 21st Century College of Education Award, and whereas Joy was the recipient of the Outstanding Achievement Award as Director of Early Education. Now, therefore, I, Thomas P. Snyder, mayor of the city of Florissant, do hereby congratulate Joy Rouse on her retirement and thank her for the dedication and commitment to the Ferguson Florissant School District.
Deborah Bryant, representing the Citizen Participation Committee, will be presenting along with the mayor and members of the council. So, Deborah, you wanna come up?
Yeah.
And she's a bundle of fun, so I can't wait to hear what she has to say. You get to use the mic. Soon, yes. We'll go down one by one?
Do somebody... Are you going up there? Or no?
Should we all go?
At least one at a time.
Okay, we'll go one at a time. You ready for us?
We'll come back.
Okay. We'll get this bring back.
My name is Debbie Bryant, and I am part of the Citizen Participation Committee, and I'm here tonight to present the 2017 Beautiful Home Award winners. So our first ward goes to Ward 1, 1400 Madison Lane, William Busby.[1295.58][1295.58](applause) So Mr. Busby's not here tonight, but we will see to him receiving his award. Our second ward goes to Ward 2, 21 Ham's Drive, Brian and Karen McNett.[1321.01][1321.01](applause)
Congratulations. We'll let your council person...
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're a pleasure, guys. You guys know who you need to go?
It looks beautiful.
You wanna lay a note on this place? We did them all.
Hello. Congratulations. Good job. Thank you. (laughter) Nobody wants to stand next to you.
You need to move.
Ward 4, 532 Wrenchco Lane, Nancy Martin.[1431.01][1431.01](applause)
Thank you very much. Guess that's my name.
Ward 5, 4 Fountain Court, Cleve and Carol Tegmeyer. They're not here tonight, but we will see to them receiving their awards.[1486.01][1486.01](applause) Ward 6, 1295 Fox Run Drive, Michelle and Steve Arthur.[1500.13][1500.13](applause)
Grandma comes first. Oh, well, so true. Mr. Hanky's gonna give you one.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Acre Dell.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. And it's Ward 9, the mayor's choice, 12 Club Ground Drive North, Doug and Marlo Stewart.[1712.51][1712.51](applause)
You guys wanna bring them down? Can we have all the award winners come up?
While they're coming up, I just want to point out that this is... These people spend a lot of time and energy to keep their property looking very nice, and this is just a good example for the rest of us to follow, and it's very fitting that we have an award like this every year, 'cause it exemplifies what Florissant's all about as far as maintaining your property.
We will move on to public hearings. We have public hearing number 1706015.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Section 405-135 of the Forest and City Code, the zoning ordinance as amended, that a public hearing will be held by the city councils of the city of Forest and St. Louis County, Missouri, in the council chambers of 955 Route Saint Francois on Monday, June 12, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition, to issue an amendment to B5 Ordinance Number 6792 to allow for ice machine kiosk in the parking lot for the property located at 350 Houdershell Road. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with, said public hearing, anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or to DD 8395142.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes.
All right, please come up.
Mr. Mayor, what time is it? How you been? Hi, Roy Williams, Baldwin, Missouri.
Tim O'Toole, St. Louis, Missouri.
Tim was here.
One of you are going to have to hold the mic, though, you know, just to get closer, so we can, thank you.
Tim was here a month or two ago for essentially the same thing. The only thing that would be different is the site plan, so I brought that along. I'm not used to using this. How do you focus it? Does it just do it itself? Well, it kind of depends. Is that better? If you can see, the kiosk is down in this corner here. So it's well, it's, in fact, it's 68 and a half feet from Keven Lane and 82.6 feet from the property line in front. So it's way back and out of the way. That still leaves us 102, we're going to lose about four parking places, three for the machine itself, one for the bollards that go around it. So then we'll end up with 102 parking places, which is more than we need. So, anything anybody wants to know, I'll see if I can answer.
Okay, here it goes. Mr. Egan.
Thank you. I was hoping we could have discussed this before tonight, at least I could have bumped there and take a look at it, but I, I guess we didn't, you didn't reach out to me, or I didn't answer my phone or something. This is going to be in the middle of the parking lot, is that how I'm looking at it?
Well, you know, not the middle.
Well, I mean, if you come in off of Keven, you'll run around.
Sir, sir, we need you to take that mic with you. And you can point to it down here on your drawing, and your finger will come up on there.
Well, to answer his question, let me get my bearings. Yes, you wouldn't run into it anymore now than you would if driving through the parking places. So in other words, those are parking places currently.
Correct.
Where it's sitting, so people don't drive, you know, they follow the drive, and the flow of the drivers around that machine.
And we're going to have bollards around the entire structure?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess, my only concern is that car's coming right in off of Keven, and I really don't, I'm not wild about where it's sitting, I'll be honest with you. I drive through that parking lot probably every day, twice a day, three times a day. It just seems like...
Well, again, you don't drive through the parking spaces.
Well, there's no, the business in front of there is not, is not leased yet, either the two businesses. They've been vacant since the building been put up.
Right, right.
But, and I know I do see people drive, just driving through there, actually. So that's my only concern, but it's...
Well, we originally wanted to have it up on Houdershell, and there's all kinds of problems with that. One is it blocks the visibility of some of the stores. It's great visibility for the machine, but also the setback requirements were too stringent. So we had to, we had to get back to where we could move it back as far as we could.
And I have any further questions?
Okay. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this?
It's the exact same setup, yeah.
I'm sorry.
If anybody wants a picture of the unit, I've got some color pictures.
This is not a question as mayor, but as a citizen that also, well, used to represent Ward 3, as you know, because we, we had some negotiations when we built the building, when you build a building. I agree with Mr. Egan, and I was wondering, is it possible to put the machine maybe up in the corner near the intersection of Houdershell?
Well, you mean in the parking spaces?
Yeah, right in there.
Yeah, but I don't know that, is Phil Loem still here? I don't know that the setbacks would allow us to. I think that was one of the problems. The very corner in front of those parking places is a...
No, I mean, where, down where it's flatter, down where the parking spots are in the corner, that's hardly ever used, those spots are never used, and it wouldn't be interfering with anybody.
What, in this area here?
Right. No, no, right, just to your right, a little bit farther to the right.
This way?
Down.
Down here.
Over.
Over here.
To your, to your right, to your right. Keep, keep your finger, take, keep going right.
Here?
And then go up.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. There is a problem with that. This, as you, as you go from that kiosk to Houdershell, the elevation increases. And so by the time, if we get it up in that little corner, the literal corner at Keven and Houdershell is so high that you can barely see the machine. That's why we screwed it back.
I don't mean actually in the corner, but in where the, where those corner, where those parking spots are near the corner, right, right there, yeah.
Yeah. See, I could, I could have had it where my finger is. But, again, because this hill is so high, I moved it back so people could see it as they're driving by.
There, you got it. You're just not on it.
I don't even see it.
Okay, now go up.
It goes off.
You're on the wall.
There you go.
You're still on the wall.
There you go, it's by the flag.
Mr. Lee's had it this point in time.
Mr. Egan, while we figure this out, do you have your light?
No, you know, if that's where I have to go, I can live with it, I just, my concern, like I said, was a car coming right in off of Keven, my fears I would run into it, but it's not my, my machine. That'd be my only concern. I guess if I had to pick any spot on it, I would move it literally right next to where it is, it'd be fine for me. But I can live with where it's at right now.
By right next, what do you mean?
If you go, you know, just directly south.
Just move it up a little bit?
Just right, right where your finger is. That way you're not coming directly in.
Yeah, we can do that.
I mean, you know, you understand my concern, when you come right in, you're going to run in right into the machine.
So if we move it up a little, yeah. I can move it a little, I just can't go like up here, because I do lose the visibility.
If you move it 10 feet, the width of the driveway, I'd be thrilled.
You got a deal.
Great.
10 feet is one parking place, we'll move it ahead one parking place.
And free ice for the mayor and I. No, 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 I'm teasing.
You're, okay, we worked it out.
Yeah, if you just, just a few feet would be great.
All right, I got it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, Councilman Egan moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to second readings. Bill Number 9283, Councilman Jones moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance to authorize a special permit to Shackelford Associates LLC to allow for shopping center ground sign for the property located 1106, 1148 Shackelford Road.
Councilman Jones moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Siam. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance to authorize a special permit to Shackelford Associates LLC to allow for the, for a shopping center ground sign for the property located 1106, 1148 Shackelford Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
Pugano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Bill Number 9283 passes and becomes ordinance Number 8322. Bill Number 9284, Councilman Siam moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance amending Section 220040, containers specifications by deleting the section in its entirety and replacing it with a new section and amending Section 405245, Screen and Birmingham, by adding R5 and R6 zoning districts for the purpose of modifying regulations regarding commercial dumpsters.
Councilman Siam moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hankey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance amending Section 220040, containers specifications by deleting the section in its entirety and replacing it with a new section and amending Section 405245, Screen and Birmingham, by adding R5 and R6 zoning districts for the purpose of modifying regulations regarding commercial dumpsters.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing none. Clerk, please pull the council for the final vote.
I didn't know if you were going to ask me or not.
I was going to ask you.
Pugano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Bill Number 9284 passes and becomes ordinance Number 8323. The next item on the agenda is new business. The first item under new business, board appoint, board appointments. Mr. Parsons?
Yes, I would like to appoint Sandra Jackson of 3275 Longchamp Strive to the Minimum Building Standards Board of Appeals.
Thank you. That's seconded by Mr. Kaputa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The appointment is made. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to appoint Christina Kernut from Ward 8 to the Environmental Quality Commission.
Councilman Parsons moves to approve the mayor's appointment, seconded by Councilman Hankey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The appointment is made. The next item on the agenda is new business. First readings, we have Bill Number 9285.
Ordinance to amend, B5 Ordinance 6792, for allow for an, to allow for an ice machine kiosk in the property parking lot for the property located 350 Houdershell Road.
Bill Number 9286.
Ordinance to amend the miscellaneous revenue account Number 0340330 in the amount of $25,276, and appropriate the same amount from the general fund, general revenue fund to account Number 036149, capital additions for the replacement of a totaled police car.
Mr. Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Childress. Discussion? Mr. Lee?
Yeah, just for the record, this is replacing a police car, which we've already received the insurance settlement on. It's been, I just want to move forward three bits.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance to amend the miscellaneous revenue account Number 0340330 in the amount of $25,276, and appropriate the same amount from the general revenue fund to account Number 036149, capital additions for the replacement of the total police car.
Councilman Childress moves for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Roll call vote, please.
Pugano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Ordinance to amend the miscellaneous revenue account Number 0340330 in the amount of $25,276, and appropriate the same amount from the general revenue fund to account Number 036149, capital additions for the replacement of the total police car. Before the final vote, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this? Seeing none, please pull the council for the final vote.
Pugano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Childress?
Yes.
Hankey?
Yes.
Bill Number 9286 passes and becomes ordinance Number 8324. The next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I, I'm going to start this evening. First, I would like to congratulate our mayor. Last Wednesday evening at the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis, he was awarded the Buzz Westfall Award for Excellence in Local Government and for his lifetime of service to this city. It was a wonderful event, well deserved, thank you, and congratulations to you. So, the event you've all been waiting for with this little postcard that came in the mail is only two days away. So it is Wednesday evening from 5:00 to 8:00 at the J.J. Egan Center down by the ice rink. Don't worry even if it rains this year, because we have you covered. So please come, bring your families, bring your neighbors, just to meet your neighbors and just have a fun night of community. It's between 5:00 and 8:00. We hope that you'll all attend, so you enjoy that nice hot dog and chips and snow cones, and we'll all be there, and we're looking forward to it. And remember, it's sort of a free event, so that's that one. And also, we will be having a work session on Monday, June 19, at 7:00 p.m. at the J.J. Egan Center, so feel free to attend. So next, we're going to go to Mr. Egan.
Why, thank you very much. I believe that this Friday, June 16, is the food truck night, and I know there's been some shuffling of the fruit, food vans, I saw that today. I think a Hawaiian truck is coming in. If you have any questions, see Paul in the back of the room. I think it's 5:00, 5:00 to 8:00, and they have live music, and the nights are selling beer and sodas and stuff, it's a great time. Also, October 21, that's ways off, but that's this year's Race to the Shrine, so you've still got plenty of time to get off the couch and begin walking and jogging and make yourself ready for the 5K run through Old Town Forest. RaceToTheShrine.com or RaceToTheShrine.org will give you all the information. And last but not least, I believe our good friends down the street at Atonement Lutheran, I think they're barbecuing this weekend. So go by and buy some of that good barbecue from the Lutherans. That's all I have. Good people.
There you go. Mr. Childress?
Not as good as...
Thank you, Madam President. I just would like to ask all the residents to please continue to have patience on Washington Road and Graham Road for these important improvement projects that are moving along on schedule. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'd like to start out with saying, like my buddy, the mayor, said MSD is going to be making an announcement very shortly, and I think everybody's looking forward to that, so we can at least throw the cards up on the table and see where we're going to go with getting some of these basements fixed out there. I know some of you guys are growing impatient, but we're working as hard as we can on that. Also, I'd like to plug team like I always do. They will be done with the other side and coming on the other side to finish up there, and it's a little bit less work on that side that they're moving to. So hopefully that will push on quick. Please be careful when you drive through there for your vehicle's sake and the safety of those union construction workers out there on that job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Siam?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to let residents of Ward 9 know there's a survey mailer coming towards your mailbox. You should receive it within a few days, hopefully, and, you know, I'm hoping to get a lot of responses to help make Ward 9 a better place. I certainly welcome your feedback and do everything I can to make everything you say happen. So unfortunately, I don't think you'll get it in time for the picnic to be able to bring it to me at the picnic, but I hope you'll mail them back in or just contact me and we can meet up or something. Anyway, anytime you need anything, just feel free to contact me. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Hankey?
Yeah, just a quick note, Paul in the back, correct me, Joe and Timmy, council mentioned the food trucks this Friday. Also, I think you can bring canned goods there for the team food pantry this Friday. Go to the food trucks and bring some food with you. There you go. Thank you.
Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, first thing, like I always say, firearms, if you're a firearm owner, make sure you secure your firearms, don't leave them in your vehicles. Neighborhood watch program, it works. We have had a resident in the ward that observed some males breaking into a home on one of the streets. She called the police, and they apprehended them and arrested the suspects. So the neighborhood watch program does work, and this lady was a member of the Neighborhood Watch. So it does work. So if you're not a member of the Neighborhood Watch, make sure you get ahold of Officer Steve Michaels at the Florissant Police Department and sign up. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, you know what, I turned you off.
There we go.
There we go. Sorry about that.
Just, we have the Fiesta in Florissant, June 24th and 25th. We'll have more information on that at the next meeting. We're going to have a Wednesday night out on June 28th at Cordy's Custom Framing, and there's going to be a duet band that's going to be from 6:00 till, you know, past dark. But at 5:45, we'll have a plaque dedication for Pat Click in front of Click Heating and Cooling. Pat was a Navy veteran and co-owner of Click Heating and Cooling for a long, long time and always gave back to the community. Hopefully, that'll be very well attended. Split Splash Summer Bash is Friday, July 7th. We'll talk more about that later. The chief and I would like to remind everyone that as 4th of July approaches, that fireworks are illegal in the city of Florissant. You can't fire them off anywhere in the city, nor can you fire off at any time, not only 4th of July, but you can't fire fireworks off anytime. That includes New Year's Eve, and we are enforcing it. There's up to $1,000 fines. And we're also very concerned about people shooting off firearms, because what goes up will come down. And as we saw in the news recently, we had a woman in Busch Stadium was injured in the arm, and innocent victims get hit by these bullets because they're eventually going to be spent somewhere, and it could kill a child, just a pet, come through your roof, come through your car. It just could be catastrophic. We don't want that to happen, so please don't shoot fireworks or firearms to celebrate Independence Day. Independence Day, we have our Independence Day celebration at the Egan Center. We'll have a North Winds Band on the 4th of July preceding the fireworks display, and it's a fantastic display. That's one of the reasons we have it every year, so that we celebrate the Fourth safely and properly. I have more to say about this later, I'm just now getting the news late this afternoon. I'm a little concerned about the alliance with County Executive Steve Stinger and St. Louis Mayor Lyda Krusen with Better Together. The Better Together folks want it to be better without Florissant, plain and simple. They don't want Florissant, they don't want Overland, they don't want Kirkwood, they don't want Webster Groves, they want us all to go away and have one big Kansas City-style government in St. Louis County and St. Louis City. I'm sure that we'll learn more about this in the days to come. They're both getting behind a study, but when the study's got Better Together doing the study, we kind of know what the results are going to be, so I'm very concerned about this. There'll be more coming later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to bring it back to Mr. Caputa, has a very nice poem to celebrate Flag Day on June 14th.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, also, it's the Army's birthday, June 14th. It will be, I believe, 242 years old, so happy birthday to the Army. Like Ms. Pagano said, June 14th is Flag Day, so I have a little poem here I would like to read that actually Ms. Pagano found on the internet.
You're so sweet. You're giving me credit.
Must be truths on the internet.
Right, right. So this is called "I Am the American Flag." "I speak from wisdom of a long life. I first felt the vigor of wind on my multicolored face when I was unfurled, my 13 stars over 230 years ago. I have known 44 presidents and have traveled across continents, oceans, and deserts, on the surface, on the moon. I was there when my nation was born, I was in the hands of my first president in the blood and snow of Valley Forge. I stand for peace, honor, truth, and justice. I stand for freedom. I have earned the right to speak. The right paid for my freedom to speech is a prize few remember or can comprehend. Most forgot, but I still see in my memory those bright, brave young men who died for me on Pork Chop Hill, Normandy, Iwo Jima, Pearl Harbor, the Coral Sea, Okinawa, Carigador, the jungles of Vietnam, and in Iraq and Afghanistan. I have fought in every American battle of every war since 1776, and when they died for me, I wrapped them in my love and draped my honor over their caskets. Those who died for my right to speak and freedom are buried in the flounder fields of France, the Punchbowl Hawaii, in Arlington and Gettysburg, and in many other places under the sun. I fly proudly over their graves at all of these places, praying that wars might end forever. I rise every morning to watch over grays of our finest men whose years were short, but whose service was longer than we can ever measure. Because of those brave American patriots, I can fly atop the greatest buildings in the world. I can stand watch at America's halls of justice. I fly majestically over institutions of learning and stand guard on the greatest power in the world. Stand up and see me, I am the most recognized symbol in the universe. Yes, I am the American flag. More than 1,300,000 lives have been sacrificed to give me the right to speak. I have been burnt, torn, and trampled on the streets of countries, and I have helped set free. I have been stained, spit upon, and defilled of my detractors. Yet there is no place on the face of this earth that knows greater freedom than my country. Freedom to each man, woman, and child to choose his life's work, to travel from state to state without passports, to attempt and succeed, to fail and not be cast in prison for failure. Freedom to speak, write, praise, question, and criticize anyone, no matter how high his station or rank. Freedom is to worship or not to worship, as a mind and heart dictate. Freedom to start your own business and become a capitalist, to create dignified job opportunities for people who want to know the pride of working for a living. I am proud of the harvest of our land, corn, wheat, cotton, apples, nuts, cherries, oranges, and peaches. I see the harvest of our 50 states, and I am proud, for we help feed the hungry in the world. Be humble and be proud of our greatness. I am particularly humble and proud when I am torn into stripes and used as bandages for my wounded comrades on the battlefield, or when I am flown at half-mast to honor my soldiers, or when I lie in the trembling arms of a grieving parent at the grave of their fallen son or soldier. We stagger at the eternal debt we owe to the untold number of American veterans who choose to set aside their personal ambitions and dreams to assure the well-being of our nation. Yes, be proud and be humble. Enough to know where your glory or greatness come from. I am called O Glory. My glory is the freedom that I give to every man, woman, and child living in America. I am the world's beacon of hope and liberty, and all I can say is give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free. Yes, I am the American flag. I am your flag. I am the flag of freedom.